Like, I'm listed in Finance.
Ah.
Finance.
And you're not in that. Oh, this would be the...
So I have Jenkins, Fleyshammer, and Rom for Finance. Not on that, on...
Okay, so this is the uncorrected version, right?
Right, so I, you know, I don't...
Should we put the corrections into the minutes?
Yeah, well, you should. Let the board clerk know one needs to be corrected. Fleyshammer, Jenkins, and Elizabeth Rom.
Rom.
Just a correction on the names for that particular committee.
Does anyone see any other needed corrections to the committee assignments? Any other corrections for the minutes? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that's all present in favor. Five. May I have a motion to approve... Oh, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 1st, 2017 special meeting, Board Goals Workshop?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five in favor. That motion passes. We have time for public comment, if any member of the public would like to speak. And let's move on to reports and discussions. 4.1 is the 2017-18 Board Goal Development Update.
Okay, as we discussed last Tuesday, and also discussed in terms of process towards the end of the meeting, Deirdre did an excellent job of doing a first draft based on our discussion. You know, I gave it a little, a few tweaks here and there, certainly nothing major. And then Laura, as we discussed, gave it yet a third go-through. And what, you know, what we ended up with is what I had placed in your... I actually had emailed to you, I think it's 4.1 in your packets. So this is where we're at. I would say that if the board, there's further discussion on any or all of these three district goals for 2017-18, we can have that this evening, and I suggest we do if anybody has input at this point, depending on where our conversation goes on that topic this evening, we could approve them under 6.9 later in the meeting, or push them off to our next meeting on August 29th or later if folks feel that they need more wordsmithing, or that they don't reflect the conversation that we had at our Board Goals Workshop last Tuesday, so... The floor is open for comments, your opinions, your questions, or what have you.
Yeah.
I thought I just captured our discussion well.
Yeah, thank you all through you for working on them. I mean, I agree. Did Laura and Steve get a chance to give feedback on them?
No.
Laura just was able to...
I mean, Laura looked at them, right?
Laura did, and she was okay with this, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think they look good.
Just one comment on the long-range planning goal. It says we're going to engage the school community. Should we be including the community at large, or some worry to that effect? I know it was discussed, and then I saw...
That's right.
...that are in the packet. Or that we have things on it.
So would you suggest engage the school community and the community at large? Would that capture sort of the range of potential stakeholders who would want to be having a voice? What do others think? Is that acceptable?
I'm trying to remember if we discussed having be a goal to, at this stage of the game, to engage the community at large, or whether there was discussion about starting with the school community. And I don't recall.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think that was, but I think over the course of this year, certainly the larger community would be engaged.
Will definitely be.
So I think we talked about not starting with them, like, say, this month, but certainly...
Should we just say "community"?
That's another way of doing it.
That way, we're not permitted one way or another.
It's a little simpler, it's a little clearer and simpler. More comprehensive. What do you think, Diane?
Part of our school community may not feel like that represents that. If we do it one way, then it feels like you're leaving out the school community.
Yeah, depending on your interpretation of community. I think we're, personally, I think we're better off adding that additional language just to be very clear that it's an inclusive process and not...
Yeah.
Doesn't give the impression, even if that's not what we meant, that we're kind of excluding, depending on how you define community.
Get the words down. You might just want to do all stakeholders, or...
Could do that.
Either way.
Other thoughts about the other two goals? Okay. What is your sense of whether you want to carry forward and act on this this evening? Do people feel comfortable with that?
I mean, I think that we should, because again, it's already August, and if we wait until the end of August, then they don't kind of get out to administer it.
I think if the five board members present are comfortable with this, or whatever little variant on that piece of language we wind up with, certainly Laura is, because she was one of the authors of it. And, you know, I said them out to everybody, Steve did not get back to me with any comments one way or the other, he's on vacation too, so... But I, you know, I would agree with Diane in that the sooner we get it down, then the sooner the other goals that will build off this get done, and we're not sitting here in the middle of November approving the superintendent's goals, or me approving administrator's goals. So it's nice to be able to get this done a little earlier in the school year, so we're not losing valuable time. So I'm okay with that, but...
Okay, great. So next, board committee reports, long-range planning. We have one set of minutes that has already been reported out.
Was it the June 28th ones?
Yeah. So, do you want to do the two?
Do you want me to do both?
Why don't you do both, sure.
Okay. All right, just bear with this, it's a meeting to go. All right, these are Laura's minutes. This meeting, we met with Mr. Chemnitzer. The last four meetings, we tried to meet with each of the board, each of the building principals. We asked him to come and talk to us about how his building is run, and what challenges the building faces with our declining enrollment, and then what he sees going forward. He, you know, he talked to us about how the middle school is affected by both buildings when it comes to staff and needs from both the high school and elementary school. He, let's see... So, sorry. He talked about how the staff at middle school, they're certified 7 through 12, and they have the sixth grade extension, which has been helpful as the smaller classes going through, and he has a lot of staff now that's teaching also at the high school. We talked about some issues in... How it's more difficult in the sciences to shift. It's a little easier with staff in ELA and math, but sciences are a little more difficult to, like, share between grades. We talked about, what, the philosophy of the middle school. You know, if we were looking at, say, moving sixth grade to CLS, or having a junior, senior high school. He talked about the middle school, how it's a whole-child approach, and how it's when you, if you were to change that, you kind of lose that in the middle school, and that's something that they currently do that you would not be able to do if you changed that model. She's noted here about the, we talked about music and band, and what would happen, again, as smaller classes come through. That's pretty much the end of her minutes.
I think we also agreed that we needed more time.
Oh, for sure.
With John, I mean, an hour and a half. We felt that we would like to spend more time with him, and there was a lot of rich conversation there.
Definitely. With all three, I think we, you know, you'd talk, you would, you know, go through some of the structure, and that would lead to other topics that would come up. I think, yeah, we could definitely meet with them all again. There's a lot in those questions that we have for them.
Now, we had talked, I believe, that perhaps at another time soon, we would maybe ask Mr. Chemnitzer and Dr. Davenport to come back and speak to us as a group, because there are a lot of commonalities, you know, in terms of shared staff, shared schedule, shared building, that, you know, might be a good idea to explore those topics with both of them at the same time. So we're not done with Mr. Chemnitzer yet. I say that in collegiate way, because it was a great conversation, but there's more to talk about, and I think combining that with Dr. Davenport's perspective, I think that would be a good future meeting to have them, and they were both fine with that, so...
And maybe I can just insert that for members of our audience, or anyone watching at home, again, we're asking a common set of questions to all the building principals about how schools currently organized, really trying to explain the way staffing is deployed, right, and the curriculum's arranged currently, and then asking them to talk about the sort of challenges they see immediately, and then what they see five years down the road as trends, and what they're anticipating being the case with declining enrollment. So those are the kind of opening questions in which these rich conversations are unfolding.
And then I have the second set of meeting, which is July 31st. This was Dr. Davenport. Before Dr. Davenport arrived, the committee, we discussed how we would reach out to our community. It's easy for us to reach out to our school community, to our parents, we have email, we have ways to contact them, but the general community is much more difficult. We don't have a local newspaper that's necessarily read by everyone. So we talked about, we could do mailings, which can be expensive. So we came up with the idea that we would send out one mailing, a postcard or something, that would ask, invite members of the community to give us their email if they're interested in receiving communication. That way, we could add them to a list, and they would receive all future communications. So that's what we plan to do for September as a starting point with our community. When Dr. Davenport arrived, we went down to his office to look at the actual master schedule, so he could start to explain to us how that's put together. He shared with us that first, the middle school puts theirs together, and then he starts with... They start with constraints. Constraints can be shared teachers in the middle schools when the middle school schedule's done. For instance, a teacher that's teaching there, they have already have their middle school schedule, so then high school's aware of when they're free. It can be shared rooms, like band and chorus. The middle school and high school won't use them, so when it comes to scheduling, you can't schedule band when middle school band is scheduled, things like that. So those are what they tackle first, and then they go into classes that are scheduled one time, they have one section of that class, then schedules classes that have two sections or three sections. Obviously, there's a lot more to it. It's color-coded, it's a whole big project, but that, he gives a general idea of how it's put together, and some of the difficulties in it.
If I could just point out, they use a piece of software to generate what he calls a conflict matrix, and then, in some ways, that software can work out some of the conflicts, especially when they have to do with, like, room utilization or whatever. But ultimately, they only, they can only go so far with what the computer has generated, at least due to the small size of our school. They finish it, they finish it by hand. I mean, it gets them pretty far down the road, but then they, and they're looking at maybe a handful of kids in a particular conflict or not, and then, you know, then the counselor's knowledge of the kids and what their plans are comes into play. So they get pretty far with the software, but it can't do, it doesn't do everything.
So enrollment in a high school within the next three years will be around 320, and then within five years, it'll be below around 290. Those are the numbers that we have right there. So that would be a big change, and that's leading part of our discussion. We've talked about the cafeteria, how that's, there's monitors or staff there, there's usually three or four, but in the high school, unlike the middle school, grades are mixed, so you can have up to 105 kids in one lunch. Just, it's schedule-driven. So the amount of monitors will vary depending on how the schedule's run, and that can change, you know, by semester as different classes change and lunches change. So even though there, you know, there are less kids in the building, there could still be, you know, one very large lunch or two large lunches. So it's not as simple as like in the middle school, where you know you have less kids, it's by class. High school's a little bit different. We talked about dual certification, and moving forward, how that could really, looking at candidates that have dual certifications could be helpful, if you have someone that had an English or a history certification, how that could benefit us going forward. Is that something that our staff potentially would look to get certified in something else? Is it something, when we're hiring, we, you know, those candidates rise to the top? Never, it's never been a criteria in the past, but it may be something that we have to look at moving forward, because that'll be more important to the school. We just talked about keeping in line that even with difficult financial times going forward, you know, school's going to change, there's going to be needs. An example of this was coding that was brought up, that's something for our kids to move forward. So we're going to constantly, even though we have to be, we're constrained by financial ways, we have to, we have to look to the future and always be looking to add things and change as the educational needs change. We talked about some of the local requirements. These are requirements that are RIBAC requirements, class week for graduation, college and careers is one of those, but that is, that class is going to be part of the requirements for SEDAS diploma. So that's already a class, it's already, they're looking at making changes to that, but whether or not that has to still be an actual requirement for graduation is something that could be discussed. We have a requirement for four years for math and science. We talked about, you know, are there other classes that could make those requirements instead of standard math and science classes? We do that for engineering now. Could we, you know, some of our computer classes, anything, could they fit that requirement? We talked about community service. There are still, Dr. Davenport said, still kids that are struggling to make that requirement. They're, they added a day of service this year. They're planning on continuing that. We talked about maybe study halls, is there a way to add community service, like, during the day instead of study halls, without running, like, scheduled resources for middle school perhaps, or, you know, any opportunities that could be done during the day that might help that. We talked about some of the prerequisites, like, for the art classes, you have to take studio art, but in a class like digital photography, is studio art necessarily, is it necessary to take that class? So maybe looking at some of those prerequisites. We talked about our PE structure. This is, the classes are scheduled as much as possible by grade. That was requested by the teachers a few years ago, and that helps them when they're planning their units, they can be specialized, and they can kind of grow on those each year. But that doesn't necessarily help when filling the classes the most effective way. You could possibly schedule them better if they were mixed grades. We talked about athletes using their sport in place of the PE requirement. There are schools that do this. Difficulty in that is saying athlete is not a three-sport athlete, they would need to be taking gym when they're not playing that sport, so how do you schedule that partially? How does that work out? So it's not as easy as just using that. And then the other concern that was brought up is that this could create kind of a class system between athletes not having to take PE and non-athletes having to take it. So we talked about distance learning, which is something, we did have a class many years ago, that we did that, that's pretty much, it's an aide in a room, and then the students are taking class at another high school. But Dr. Davenport informed us that that was an issue sometimes, because the bell schedule wouldn't add up, so if, like, that high school's not on the same bell schedule, it can make attending that class difficult. So, you know, they'd be late to a class, or they'd be late to that class. But that was, you know, several years back, now that we've done that, technology's changed, again, so that's something that could be looked into, maybe that's better if we have the class, and, you know, we got other kids to join our classes. The idea of a pass/fail was discussed, being able to take a class or an elective on a pass/fail basis. Maybe the kids are not taking some of the electives, they don't want anything to, maybe they're interested in the class, but maybe it's not their best subject, they don't want anything to affect their GPA, or possibly their workloads, and maybe if it was a pass/fail, more kids would be interested in trying some of the other classes that we have. Again, it's something that would take some more thought as to how it would work, but it was an idea that was just, that was talked about. Dr. Davenport did share with us that school-based anxiety has increased in the high school. This is something that was shared with us by the other building principals. He told us that the special ed director has been working with the general ed teachers to give them more training, to help address the needs of student population. We talked to him about junior, senior high school, the idea of that. He's worked in a school before that was a junior, senior, so he's had some experience with this. You know, he explained to us, it's just basically a mini-high school. So everything that's good about the middle school, focusing on the whole child, blocks, teaming, those are lost when you have that. So certainly something that works, you can do it, but, you know, you lose some important aspects of the middle school, and working with that age child. Briefly, at the end of our meeting, we talked about the idea of putting together what the school would look like if it were only providing what is mandated by the state. So whatever is mandated, what, putting that together, what would that look like? What would that cost? That would be like the bare minimum of what a school has to provide. And then maybe building a model from that, maybe a middle model, and then maybe a top model, which would be like, if we had everything we would possibly want in a school, what would that look like? What would that cost? And that might be something going forward that could help taxpayers to kind of see, you know, sometimes there's questions about, you know, why don't you cut this, or why is this being paid for? But to see what you actually have to pay for, and then all the other great things that schools do provide, might be a good way to proceed with this process, but we, you know, we only touched on that, so that's not a definite plan, it's just one of the ideas that we threw around. We talked about, our next person we'd like to meet with is our special ed director. So, a lot of information to gather.
Any questions on long-range planning?
No, I don't know if this exactly fits a long-range planning discussion, but I don't totally understand why the whole-child focus is lost, which is if you just move sixth grade. I mean, I understand that sixth grade really has focus on...
I think you would lose all middle school. So like, if seventh and eighth were part of the high school, like, a junior, senior high school.
Six goes down.
And sixth grade was then in the chancery, so there would really be no middle school.
Right.
So all of that that they do in middle school, sorry.
And there's already a tremendous amount of schedule overlap and sharing going on. I think that's one thing we've learned...
Yeah.
...from speaking with both principals.
I thought it was still maintaining a junior, high school of seventh and eighth grade, rather than...
I mean, you could have been six through 12, I mean, there's many different models. You could have six through 12, it's just, six could go back to, you know, because of teacher certification, sixth grade maybe is more a natural fit in the elementary school.
Right. Yeah, we wanted to understand what the real distinction is, the kind of pedagogical and philosophical distinction between a junior high school model and a middle school model. So, aside from the grades, wherever you make the cut, the feeling is that the middle school model really is distinctively different from the way we have subject-specific kinds of planning, department planning in high school. It's more about this team approach and focus on developmental growth in the middle school years.
I think both principals are good about helping us to understand, it's not just about, you know, is there space for them there, to schedule them, is there, you know, it's more than just that.
Yeah.
You know, what goes on in the course that goes on in middle school between sixth and eighth grade is, you know, is tremendous in the way that you help them there. So that would be something, certainly, to do it, but that would be something you would lose if you lifted that model.
Any other questions? We're almost a public comment, if you want to ask something. Okay, so, moving along, do we have a report from personnel?
Well, that should happen in executive session...
All right, yes, of course, correct, okay.
The nature of that report...
Is not happening, no.
Relative to negotiations.
Okay, 2017-18 board meeting schedule, potential modification?
Yeah, there's nothing very esoteric about this item. Essentially, we put together this scheduled meetings for the coming year. I mean, it got past me, it got past the prior board clerk, but I happened to notice a couple weeks ago, when I was actually putting these meetings on my calendar, that the March 27th meeting is a Tuesday during spring break, and that might be inconvenient for, at the very least, board members who may not be here. So the question, and we don't have to resolve the question tonight, but we should resolve it soon, so we can let our parents know, is, do we just cancel the meeting on March 27th? Do we double up and reschedule that meeting the week before, so then you have two meetings back-to-back? Or schedule it the Tuesday after, so you have two meetings back-to-back? Or cancel it, but leave it as an open issue, that as we are working through the budget development process, if we need an additional meeting, we can schedule it? I mean, those are some options. Or we could just leave it and assume we would have better than a quorum of board members there. People may not know what their plans are, but it is a potential conflict with spring break, so, I don't know. Parents take their kids to colleges, and, you know...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So I just want to bring that to your attention, make you aware of that conflict, and we should resolve it soon. And if people have any thoughts on what they'd like to see done... And if people have any thoughts on what they'd like to see done, it'd be great to hear them.
Diane?
I think it probably will be a conflict for people. I'm just, my concern is that it's just smack in the middle of budget time. You know, this year we couldn't get enough meetings, so.
Right.
I, I don't know if we should, maybe it's better to double up or if anyone, if anyone knows their plans, I don't know how many people might be an issue, but I don't know that we can go without a meeting.
I don't think we can go without. Yeah.
I'd say that, you know, I'm available March twenty-seventh. I don't expect to be going anywhere, but I think, for me, it'd be more practical to have a meeting after the twenty-seventh because hopefully by that time we will have our figures in place for the budget rather than earlier because we're still working on.
That's true.
Gathering information.
State budget may not be.
Given how late we often go.
What's that? April, April first is the deadline for the state budget, so.
For the state budget, right?
So that, May, May. Help us to have us figures for state aid.
So we're thinking the wait.
April second?
April second?
Third.
Or third?
April third.
That sounds good. And we're getting closer to the vote time and that's when we need the meetings?
Yep.
Okay. Good.
So, well, works for me.
We'll have to make a motion.
We have, we should have a motion later to.
Okay.
Modify the.
Do you want to do it tonight or should we do it in the next meeting?
I mean, we don't have a lot, there aren't a lot of options, so.
Want to do it tonight? Okay. All right.
Let's just do that later on and clear the decks of that issue.
Okay, moving on. Election of the NISBA Area Nine Board of Director.
Yeah, I just got this in my inbox a week or so ago. Apparently the Area Nine director and her, name is escaping me although I know who she is and she attends another meeting that I attend. There you go. Thank you, thank you, Mark. Apparently if they're electing another Area Nine director.
She's pretty new.
I think she decided not to be, not to seek reelection, if I recall.
Okay, there you have it. So I don't know either of these individuals and deadline for ballot submission is October tenth, so it's not like we have to make a decision tonight or even next month. I, I'm hoping that as we get closer to October tenth, these people will send out some kind of a missive to every board saying, I'm so-and-so, I'm running for the Area Nine seat, this is what I'd like to accomplish. And then we could make a decision. Right now I couldn't recommend one or the other. I don't know anything about them. So I just want to put this on your, on your radar and we'll have to look for, for more information over the next month or so.
Thank you, Joe. Good news.
It's that time of year.
Sports season's starting.
Monday.
Monday. That's good news.
Good day.
Get those student athletes out there running around.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they start the preseason.
Preseason starts Monday.
Monday.
Well, I guess I have, you know, one, I mean, there's nothing earth-shaking, you don't have to fasten your seatbelts or anything.
For this piece of good news.
But we have, as, as we typically do, we have quite a bit of curriculum development going on during the summer. This, this year we tried, tried a little pilot project. Typically, we have teachers who are doing curriculum work here on campus, doing the curriculum work in person. Sometimes it's an individual teacher who's working on a project. Oftentimes, it's a group of teachers or maybe all the teachers at a particular grade level or in a particular subject area, department, whatever. So we have traditionally had them be here on campus, doing the work here. And this summer, we tried, we're in the middle of a, of a pilot with a relatively small group of teachers who are, who are working not onsite or some onsite and some offsite for various reasons, childcare reasons or elder care reasons or whatever. And they, they run the gamut. I think it's, so far, the building principals and Mr. Krebs are, are reporting what they feel, at least at this stage of the game, is, is, has been a positive reception and result. There, there are two things in particular that we're looking at very closely in this pilot. Number one, we required any, the teachers who, who applied to work totally or partially off-campus for their summer curriculum project work, that they use the technology so that their colleagues as well as the building principals and Marvin can check in on what they're doing, see their products in, in development. You know, we, we want to make sure we provide opportunities for our teachers to model use of the technology and that, that part of it's been successful. Steve Jensen set them up with, with the capability of doing that. The other thing is that we know that next summer and likely for the next two summers, we're going to be doing capital project work on campus. And that may be a way to take off some of the pressure of having space for teachers' work here during the summer.
Right.
Depending on how the, you know, how the work gets laid out after we get approval from the Education Department, who would not be out of the question that we're not able to accommodate teachers on campus next summer. So this has given us an opportunity to kind of trial-run what it would look like. And we may need to use that model for the next several years. We may find that that model is just a better way of, of doing business and accommodating some of the needs of our teachers during the summer. So that's good news for me. It's working well and we'll, we'll let you know after the projects are, are done whether it's something that needs to be tweaked or we need to just do more of that, so.
Okay, good. Okay, old business.
I have one, but somebody else, you look like you would better jump in there, so. So anyway, I sent to all of you a, a first draft of board committee meeting schedule. You know, for a number of reasons, this, people's availability, to be specific, made this process a little more challenging than it's been in other years. And in other years, it's been really challenging when there haven't been any constraints. It, as you can see, because of people's availability, it's heavily loaded into Thursdays. You know, it's heavily loaded towards the end of the week.
Yeah.
There are some late afternoon meetings and some midday meetings, the ones that could happen in the morning on a day other than Thursday. We, we plugged that one in to try and take a little bit of the pressure off that. But I just want to make sure all of you've got it and I need feedback from the board at this point. You know, over the next week or so. I've already gotten responses from several board members saying, great, works for me. As I mentioned in my memo to you late this afternoon, once I get your feedback, I have to plug it into my world.
Right.
To make sure I don't have untenable conflicts with some of these days. I mean, I think they'll work for me. I try to keep in mind Board Packet Fridays, which is a bad day for me.
Right.
The Friday before a board meeting. Also some other meetings that I know I have that are kind of regularly recurring meetings. So it might change some, but for right now, I need to hear back from all seven of you. I've heard back from three of you thus far. Yeah, it works for me or it works for me except for this meeting or except for this time or except for this day of the week. And then I'll try to massage it a little bit more and.
Great.
I think, I think we'll be able to get there by the start of school.
And these dates are for the beginning of the school year, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're already into.
Well, into August.
August. So I know we, we had talked about trying to get the curriculum committee.
Yeah.
To meet to look at our technology.
Right.
That's something I'm working with Marvin to get that set up. So that, that's the only one I anticipate. We may try to be a little bit more aggressive and meet in, in August. The rest of them, I think, probably wait until, until September.
Okay.
So I'm not looking for your feedback tonight, although I take it tonight, but you can just throw me a quick email and let me know.
Sounds great.
What works for you, what doesn't work for you.
You sent that later today, sorry.
Yeah, it was today. It was a sad.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. No, no, no shaming here. I mean, I just, I just want to make sure everybody.
Gets it.
Got it.
Yeah.
And you have some time to.
Thank you.
To react to it. That's, that's all.
So now it is time for public comment. Let me invite members of the public to share thoughts or questions. Thank you. Oh, and if you can share your name and.
Sure. Okay, my name is Kathy Dobson. I'm a fellow, I'm actually a graduate of the program. I, I had a couple of questions about the long-range. I think, I think it's, I think it's really good doing it. I think it's great that the minutes are online, so it's very transparent. I guess I have two basic questions. One is, is anybody looking into kind of the reason why they're declining at all? And is that something that, that the board thinks that they should look into or is it just kind of like you're kind of accepting this is just what's happening with the town crime day? You know, you kind of, it's beyond our, your, well, it's just beyond everybody's. And I guess the second question, the second question I have is about trying to, I guess try to save money but use the resources that Red Hook has. You know, they have an international bachelor award and I think when I was in school, I didn't do this, but I think there was the option of taking classes there. This could be false.
I don't recall that and I was here when you were, when you were in school.
Oh, really?
Yes.
It was a rumor.
It was a rumor. But I'm wondering if, like, and I know we're a district, so it might not be possible. And I'm wondering if there's any way to kind of look into sharing resources with Red Hook. And I guess, well, there's other stuff like schools, I guess we pay them, right? So they, you know, provide services to us. There's also just, you know, college, I don't know if you have a relationship with them, and has to take classes. But I'm just wondering, especially the high school, but I guess middle school, I'm just looking at too, if they're looking into ways to share resources with either districts or other schools. So that might also just like is.
So I'll respond to two of them. If the board members want to, they can, they can feel free. I'll do the second one first. Yeah, there are, there are certainly possibilities, but as we were talking earlier, there are also constraints. There are transportation constraints, for example. And there are constraints that have existed since when you were in school and we did some distance learning where you have schools sharing distance learning opportunities with different bell schedules. And nobody wants to change their bell schedule because this school starts at this time for very good reasons for that community and this school starts at a different time for very good reasons for that community. And I don't think regionally, we've hit critical mass yet where everybody is saying, you know what? If we don't all go to a common bell schedule, we're, we're going to lose programs. I mean, it just hasn't gotten that bad yet and it didn't get that bad back in the late nineties and early two thousands when there was, there was a distance learning program in, in this county. Just people didn't see a need to do that and they didn't do that. So because the schedule crossover, a student who wants to, I'm just talking about online learning right now or distance learning, you know, Red Hook's second period is running from, you know, eight-thirty to nine-fifteen and our second period is running from eight, eight-fifteen to nine o'clock. And so now a kid here winds up missing two periods to take one. And those are the kinds of things that we struggle with. That said, there are other things that we're looking at, we're currently looking at in terms of sharing. For example, we're going to be opening up a, a, a small, but it's, it's small because it's a special education program and it's, it's allowable and actually required by the state to keep, you know, for, for autistic students. You can't have twenty autistic students in a class and, and get anything done. So the, the size of the class is small. We may have four or five students for a class like that, but that means there are two or three other spaces in that class and a neighboring school district like Red Hook or Pine Plains or, you know, schools that are close in terms of the, the transportation issue could send a kid to that program. And we could do the same with other schools. So I think those conversations are happening more and more. You know, where they go, that remains to be seen, but there are opportunities, yeah. In terms of the declining enrollment, I mean, there's been a lot of speculation about it and I'm not sure it's anything more than speculation at this point. But one thing we do know is that declining enrollment is a regional, if not a state phenomenon. And this is not endemic to Reinbeck.
But Red Hook's increasing, right?
No, they're not. Every school district in this county, except for the Poughkeepsie City School District, is seeing an enrollment decline.
Okay.
So again, maybe, maybe some are declining more than others. And at one time, again, I, you know, when, when you were in school, and I know when you were in school because that's about when I came here, Pine Plains had more kids than we do. Now they have fewer kids than we do, K-12. So again, why Pine Plains is lost more than Reinbeck, you could only speculate.
Are the numbers public for each school district or do we find out?
Yeah, it's called BEDS information. B-E-D-E, B-E-D-S. And then you go onto the New York State Department of Education and look for BEDS and it will give you the school population or the district population as of the first Wednesday of October. It's the first Wednesday of October.
Do you forget my class, too? Just the total.
You can drill down to it. You can drill down to it. I mean, there's a basic page where ours will be a little over eleven hundred. No, actually, last year I think we were ten fifty about.
Ten fifty-five, yeah.
But if you can drill down, you can see it by grade level.
Okay.
Just to give you an example, we had a graduating class of about a hundred, incoming class of about sixty. So it's, the number of births that are happening have gone down tremendously. And we get that data, the census data, and we can look five years out and we're, it's, it's really low right now.
Okay.
Sure, you're welcome.
Diane, do you want to ask something?
Yeah, with the declining enrollment, we have talked about it as a board. We, a few years ago, contacted people that had left school to see why they had left school. That didn't really yield.
Tangle anything.
Anything necessarily. It's all different reasons. We, you know, talked about ways to get people to come here, but generally, like Joe said, it's, it's all around the state. It's not just here. As far as shared services, we, we share, our food service director, we share with Red Hook. Some of our sports teams, we share. We have one that shares with Red Hook, we have one with Pine Plains. So we're, we're always open to those ideas. We're, you know, shared services is something, we're looking at, Joe, just been at meetings to share services in the county, with the village, you know, anything that could possibly be helpful. Part of this city is looking at all the options. We're learning to keep opportunities, so we're constantly looking for those.
And just as long as we're, we're on, on a roll here, another, another myth buster would be that our population is declining because we're seeing large numbers of students leaving for private parochial schools. That, that number overall is down from what it was.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I have a bunch of beds in my head. A lot of it has to do with the, a lot of the houses, especially in the village, being community-owned houses.
Right.
But I don't know if that's also the theme. I don't know. I mean, there's no.
I think that is, I think that's fair to, to wonder about that.
Okay, okay, I mean, I'm renting the building right now and that's just what we're seeing.
But I said, I mentioned last workshop, I, because I was wondering, why is it declining? Why is it, and it's statewide. And the article I had read, I read a couple of articles, they were saying that people are leaving the state of New York and they're not necessarily, we're not refilling.
Okay.
It backed up. So it's definitely a state issue. And, yeah. And the resource thing, you know, like Diane mentioned, Joe had been going to some workshops hosted by the state even.
Well, they were hosted by the county.
Hosted by the county, looking at ways to share resources.
I'm curious, is the state, I mean, the state education board, are they concerned about this or is this just the kind of, this is how it is?
You probably don't want to get me off on, on a diatribe about the. You probably don't want to get me off on, on a diatribe about the state education department, but...
There's also a teacher shortage in New York State, so...
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't really know that they're that concerned. I think they're more concerned right now about dealing with parents opting their kids out of standardized tests. I think they're more concerned about submitting their ESSA grant to the federal government to get that approved. That's the replacement for no child left behind. I think they're more concerned about, I had another, another issue that, that just went out of my head, but I haven't heard any dialogue from the state education department level being concerned about that particular issue of declining enrollment statewide. And it is, except for some, not every school, but it's, it's pretty much the way it is in New York State.
Can I also add that a large part of what the Long Range Planning Group, ADHOP group wants to do is survey members of the community, all members of the community, and also members of the school community, to get a sense of, why did you come to Reinbeck? For those who've moved here, made a deliberate choice to come here, place their children in school here, what draws people to the district? What is distinctive about the identity of this district in the, in the minds of people who've made that choice? We really want to understand that as, in as comprehensive a way as possible, because some of these kinds of conversations that you're opening up are definitely conversations we're all having in exploratory way, and we need to know if it is the will of the majority of people in the community that we look into things like distance learning or shared resources with contiguous school districts and around what kinds of sharing. So it's definitely something we're very, very attuned to studying right now. Pop comment?
Yeah, hi. Joe Gare from Reinbeck. Last year, I, I came at the end of last year when the budget was coming due, and there was a lot of talk, and perhaps this is the Long Range Planning Committee, talk about citizens being involved in committee to review the budget and to help to understand it better come the time to, then pass the budget. And I had spoken to Mark about this. I'm interested in serving in that way. You talked about it earlier in terms of the educational community and then the community at large, and I'm not sure what that means exactly, but if it's available for regular citizens to serve and work with whomever is reviewing the budget and putting together an idea for a new budget, I'm interested in serving on that. That's my main focus for coming tonight. Although earlier, Diane, you said that studio art wasn't essential for photography class.
Question, what do you want to know?
All right, well, you know, I think studio art is, is the base that teaches the, you know, the principles of arts and the components of design, and I think that's why it's pretty requisite for almost all the other classes, because it's not about teaching somebody to use a camera, teaching them how to be an artist with the camera. And that's why I think the studio art is pretty requisite for that. And just as a side note, I am available March 27.
Thank you, sir. Well, your, your point is extremely well taken in terms of how we build out this process of consultation over the course of this year. It's part of our goal as a board, to figure out how to create this sort of robust participatory conversation. So we have your name now. We know, we've declared your interest. Yes. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we're ready for other. Other?
I don't have any.
Other? No other, there's no other.
Thank you all.
Farewell, members of the public. Then let us move to our action items. Is there anyone who would like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Everyone present is in favor. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Laura Eiffel? As a long-term substitute in the position of English teacher at the Reinbeck High School, effective September 5, 2017 through June 22, 2018. At the pleasure of the board, at the salary of Step 5 MA plus 9, $67,234, in accordance with the RTA salary scheduled for 2016-17. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the extension of the leave of absence granted to Caitlin Grandy, English teacher at the Reinbeck High School.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, just want to point out for the record, and my apologies, it's not the extension of, it is the leave of absence.
Ah, okay, so strike.
Yeah, it's not an extension, it's the leave that we approved back in...
Okay, by the leave of absence.
Back in the spring.
Okay. So as amended. All those in favor? That motion passes? Five in favor. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2017-18 school year coaching staff? Soccer, boys modified, to be determined, $2,308. Volleyball, JV, Natalie DeStrange, $2,567. Cross-country modified, to be determined, $2,209. Swimming, girls varsity assistant, Nina Vitale, volunteer.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes? Five in favor. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the resolution to confirm tax rolls and authorize the tax levy for the 2017-18 school year? See resolution attached. Any discussion?
Yeah, or if anybody has questions to ask of Tom, since we just got this information earlier this morning, and if you have questions, please don't hesitate to...
This is what you also sent us as an attachment, correct?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. Did, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Well, there's a couple of things. Yeah, just, just for general knowledge and everything, we propose a 3.88% tax levy increase. The tax rate increase, it came out to 3.4155. All right, so it was lower than what it was. Last year, it was a negative, actually. Our tax increase was actually a negative last year. Other thing of interest, too, and it is, is that the town of Stanford, which was around 60% equalized versus 100%, has gone to 100% valuation.
This is, this is one of the 6.5 documents that you're taking, just, just so you, in case you're looking for.
So that only leaves one town, and that's the town of Hyde Park, at less than 100%. So just...
Okay, great. So I think that probably bears repeating the, can you again tell us the differential between the two figures?
Right. The tax levy increase, as per the budget, was 3.88%, and that's what we got the override for, is 3.88. The actual tax rate increase was 3.4155.
Can you explain why?
Increase in assessments, changes in equalization rates are the main drivers of this. Could be exemptions come off, get put on, so the taxable value of each town changes every year. There's, and I don't, I don't know what got sent out to you exactly.
Everything gets sent to me.
Okay. So I, I break it down like changes in assessment, so we can see that, give you an example, the town of Reinbeck, the assessment went up 0.43%. That helps drive the tax rate down. Clinton went up by 0.41. So you can see that all these little changes affect your whole tax rate. So it's, so typically, more assessments means lower tax rate. So there was a slight increase, it's 1.42, but a lot of that is driven by Stanford going to 100%. The best thing to really look at is the last page, and it's, it's this one here, it almost looks like the tax rates, but it really has everything in this one. This is the percentage change due to full value, because you tax on full value. And as we can see, that our...
It's not the last page in your packet.
Right.
It's his last page, but it says percent change due to full value assessments.
And so that's 0.48, you see there. So overall, the value of our community went up by almost a half a percent. So there's a half a percent more out there picking up our tax less.
Are you talking about the assessed value of the parcels in the town of Reinbeck?
For the entire community, the entire school district.
Entire school district.
Entire school district, including the assessed towns.
Yeah, their communities, right.
So that could mean not necessarily more people, but some people paying.
It, it could be a number of things. In fact, one of the things I see is every year I see more veterans exemptions. Not a lot, a couple more, but, so that means, you know, it's, so that shifts a little bit. Yeah, there's new properties, some become nonprofit organizations, and all of a sudden it comes off the roll. Someone puts on an addition on their house, and that adds to the tax roll. All these little adjustments are done by our tax assessors in each of our towns, each and every week. I'm not going to say daily, but at least every week, those, these numbers are always changing.
So just to kind of follow up, we did try to break it down, what the proposal that the voters did support would mean for average taxpayers. I'm wondering if you can give us any kind of sense of someone at that, like, median home price, what...
I didn't do that, but I can work that out for you next time. It's a good point.
It'd be great to share that with our community, because I think, you know, it's, it's worth, worth sharing.
Right. It, it ended up being a little bit less than what we proposed.
That's right.
Not tremendously, but a little bit less.
But somewhat less.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have another, another question. When you talk about equalization rate, can you explain that?
Got a couple hours? Well, this is a college course.
I'm sure you're asking this question.
It's broad, it's...
I'm kidding.
No, I was so glad you were asking these questions, it's wonderful.
I actually did a whole paper on this in college, so...
He's in his element.
Yeah, you have two minutes. Yes, I'll keep it short. I will keep it short.
Impossible.
Most towns are at 100%. So if your home is valued at $300,000, that's what it's taxed for, $300,000, okay? There are some communities, let's say they're at 50% valuation, meaning they're half the cost. So your $300,000 home, let's say it was put in Hyde Park, it's valued at $150,000. This is a mechanism that makes that $150,000 home in Hyde Park equal $300,000.
Pay the same taxes as a $300,000...
So they end up paying the same school, the taxes, at the same rate that you would in the town of Reinbeck. So it's an equalization, because not every town values their homes the same. Every, towns can do whatever they want when they do your, your assessment, but the state equalizes it and says, you only do it at 50% of value. I was in a school district that was at 5% of value.
So that property was undervalued.
Tremendously. But any little change in that equalization rate completely threw things like, all of a sudden, the value of your house just went up 20%. Just because it went from 5% to 4%, the value of your house just went up 20% because the numbers were that low. So this helps, and unfortunately, Albany doesn't do a great job of going out and really, are you at 100%? Is Reinbeck at 100%? Is Stanford at 100%? Is Red Hook at 100%?
They want you to be at 100%.
Yes, that's the gold standard. If everybody's at 100%, then it's a level playing field in terms of, of taxing.
Right.
But what happens is, and this happened in Reinbeck, it's been at least 10 years since they did a revow of all the properties in the town of Reinbeck. So what's happened in 10 years? I mean, a lot's happened in terms of property values in 10 years. If you're not constantly revowing, now, this is your assessors, your town assessors, if they're not constantly reassessing those properties to keep it at 100% of what the market value is, then there's going to be some slippage there. And if you let that slippage go for 10 years, or 15 years, or 20 years, now it's way out of whack with what the market value of that house is. And the, the equalization rate is the state's imperfect way of trying to balance that out using a formula, but it's, it's imperfect. And, and the state doesn't require municipalities to revow their properties on a regular basis to stay at 100% value. They don't. Some towns do, and some towns don't. And I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, it's just the way it is. And then you'll see, you'll see what happens when the town of Reinbeck does a revow here this coming year. And what you thought your house was worth is going to be, I would predict, in many cases, not everybody, a lot of people are going to be, well, some are going to be worth less, some are going to be worth more.
I see.
And depending on the total value of your community, that's 50% of your combined wealth ratio, which drives all your state aid figures.
Say that again, the total wealth?
So this, this, the total?
We just, we just walked into another nightmare scenario, yeah, so...
Your total assessments, your property assessments, that grand total, which is $1.7 billion, is 50% of your combined wealth ratio, which drives your state aid figures.
So the lower it is, the more state aid you get.
Right, right.
The higher it is, the less state aid you get on it, because it's an indicator to the state of your wealth.
The high combined...
Part of it, part of it.
Part of the four. The other 50% is personal income tax.
Okay, so now, I don't want to open up a camera.
Well, you are then, so go ahead. So that's what we're here for.
Well, I, I played into how well the kids did on test.
Relative to your...
Relative to the wealth of the community.
How well kids did, regardless of the wealth of the community.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, honestly, that's the 800 pound gorilla in the, in the room. I mean, more affluent communities, kids have more opportunities. Had better test scores. They're going to do better.
Yep, they did.
Kids in the inner city, perhaps, who don't have those opportunities, again, this is a broad generalization naturally, don't do as well.
Wow, thank you for that discussion. So are we prepared to vote? All those in favor? That motion passes, five in favor.
Okay, that's 6.4 we just voted on, correct?
6.4, yes, 6.4. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to issue the tax warrant to the school tax collector, quote, "to collect taxes in the total sum of $27,912,45," exclusive of star reimbursements. The tax collector is not responsible for the collection of that portion of the warrant. The collection period begins September 1, 2017, and ends on October 31, 2017. Original warrant will be brought to the meeting to be signed to the board. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that's five in favor, that motion passes. That's motion 6.5.
We, we're going to pass around the, the thing you each have to sign, so just make sure everybody signs it before you, you leave tonight.
Okay, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of a bench, plants, and associated supplies from Althea Ramirez, valued at $1,700. She placed at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School in memory of Theo Alves. Any discussion? I'd just like to say on behalf of the board that we are extremely grateful for this very thoughtful gift and look forward to its placement. All those in favor? Okay, that's five in favor, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional emergency conditional substitute instructional and non-instructional staff for the 2017-18 school year? See attached.
So move.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five in favor, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2017 programs and curriculum work?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That's five in favor, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's 2017-18 goals as amended for the school district?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, five in favor, that motion passes. Then shall we add a final motion, which would be 6.10? May I have a motion to approve the modification of the scheduled meetings as specified?
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor? It would be, it should be April 3.
Right, from March 27.
March 27, April 3. Yes. Okay, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that's five in favor, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with our teachers bargaining unit?
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Five in favor, that motion passes, we are moving into executive session.